Wish to call to order the Commissioners' Meeting of Wednesday, March 29, 2023. I will note for the record that all three Commissioners are present in the Nat U Hill Meeting Room. And we'll start with the public statement. "We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination, harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC." And we have a proclamation. Commissioner Jones, would you start that?
Whereas over 1.4 million people in the U.S. identify as transgender, and Transgender Day of Visibility is an international event dedicated to recognizing the resilience and accomplishments of the transgender community. And on this day, we seek to raise awareness about the struggles that transgender individuals face and to advocate for their right to full equality, which they so rightfully deserve. And members of the gender community of Monroe County actively engage in every aspect of our community, yet they often face discrimination, harassment, and violence at rates much higher than cisgender community members.
This year alone, over 450 anti-LGBTQIA+ bills have been introduced across the country. We call upon the Indiana General Assembly to cease from creating legislation which discriminates against and causes harm to the transgender residents of our state. This year alone, every single person deserves to live a true and authentic life, free from discrimination regardless of who they are or how they express themselves. Yet transgender and non-binary people continue to experience significant disparities, including negative mental health impacts, unemployment, homelessness, harassment, and bullying. And they are often victims of violence simply for being themselves.
As we celebrate International Transgender Day of Visibility, let us continue to celebrate transgender and non-binary individuals, allies, and community leaders. Together, we can create a more equitable future for ourselves and for generations to come. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim March 31, 2023, as Transgender Visibility Day. Proclaim this 29th day of March, 2023. Thank you very much. So we're ready for department updates. Ms. Kelly?
Good morning. According to the Indiana Department of Health, COVID cases and transmission levels are noted as low across the state. Statewide wastewater COVID concentrations are still noted as decreasing on the Indiana COVID-19 wastewater dashboard. And the department is currently monitoring an emerging fungus, Canada auroras, that is spreading in U.S. healthcare facilities. This is now a reportable disease. In beginning April 1st, reporting in Indiana will become mandatory. In general, this is not a threat in healthy individuals. Those who are very sick or have long stays in healthcare facilities are at an increased risk.
What are the symptoms of that condition?
Sure. So the most common symptoms are fever and chills. It can be difficult to know if a patient has this infection, and a laboratory test is needed to diagnose.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Ms. Jones?
No, I had been hearing about this fungus, and it's good to know a little bit more about it.
Ms. Thomas? Thank you. No questions. Thank you very much. Are there any other department updates? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. This is for items not on our agenda. There's a limit of three minutes per speaker. And if you wish to speak, please identify yourself and let us know whether or not you're a resident of Monroe County. Please make sure that mic's turned on also.
Am I on?
No.
I think so.
Okay.
Hello, Commissioners and staff. Can you hear me okay? I'm a frat roster. I'm the new trustee of Bloomington Township, a 20-some-year Monroe County resident. And I am here today on behalf of our Heading Home of South Central Indiana, on the advisory committee, along with a couple of you. First, just to say thanks for your continued support on that plan, that is a community-wide plan to make homelessness rare, brief, and non-repeating. There is a lot of work, good work going on. I'm so proud of how our community came together to work on that long-term plan. And today, I thought I'd just take a minute to talk a little bit about how we would love your help in getting the word out about the need for more landlord partners, specifically for folks with housing voucher waivers, Section 8 waivers. Not only is there a waitlist for those, but then often what happens is that once someone gets a voucher, it is really hard to find a landlord willing to work with them in an area of town where they want to be, that's, you know, maybe close to work, or childcare, or whatever it may be. In addition to just some outreach and education that we all need to do to get the word out about how easy it is to work with this program, how the check is guaranteed every month, and there's someone there to, you know, talk to if there are issues, there's also a new program being expanded by Heading Home, and that is a Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund that really takes all those concerns of risk and liability off the table, so to speak. So would love your help in getting the word out. If anyone has questions, look up the Heading Home of South Central Indiana team, and Mary Morgan over there, Tatiana Wheeler, can assist with further information. It's a great opportunity to fill vacancies easily, to help low-income families have stability, and to be part of the solution. So just wanted to share that message. Say thanks again for all that you're doing. And yeah, have a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. That work is critical to a healthy community. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Is there anyone virtually I can't see on the screen? Thank you, TSD. Seeing none, let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is approval of minutes.
Move approval of the minutes from March 22, 2023.
Second. Is there any comments or questions?
None.
I didn't either, so call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Claim Stocket Accounts Payable, March 29, 2023.
Second. And we have Ms. Lutler back with us. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Accounts payable for March 29, 2023 is $1,429,556.51.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Seeing none, is there any public comment? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Claim Stocket for Accounts Payable, March 29, 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. And I will let the public know also that recently, our auditor went through state review and came through with really glowing report on this. And so that's a real relief to all of us. I will note for the record that we have reports from Waits and Measures, covers the period from February 16 through March 15. And with that, we'll move on to new business.
I move approval of the Health Services Fees Chapter 310 revision.
Second. And we have Ms. Kelly here.
You have to put in the chat.
And Michael?
Can you?
Yes.
Okay. I think we were just having video connection issues. So this just pertains to a regularly scheduled fee code review. Proposed changes were presented and unanimously approved by the Board of Health on August 25 of 2022. For foods, the fee code proposal includes recommending the addition of fees for reinspection of retail food establishments that require more than two pre-operational inspections prior to opening that is due to negligence. The Foods Division is also recommending offering a multiple farmer's market license. This will provide a discount for those participating in multiple markets and decrease the need to complete multiple applications. The Board of Health is proposing to remove the real estate inspection services. These services are time-consuming, and they can be completed by private companies. And for vital records, they include proposing to change issuing the standard size only for birth certificates. The fee will remain $16. The Board of Health is proposing to increase the cost of home birth registration to $53. Currently, the fee is $27. This is half the price of other services, despite taking more time for staff to complete. And I do have additional staff here with me to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Not at this time, thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
All of this makes a great deal of sense, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I appreciate receiving the breakdown of approximate costs to provide services, especially relating to seasonal establishment licenses. And I would say that while I understand the issue with septic inspections being, you know, so costly in terms of time for our department, the fact that of the ones that were inspected, that they found a 30% fail rate worries me a great deal. So I would ask my colleagues to consider leaving the septic inspections in place for now. But I would like to have a meeting between one of us, members of the Health Department, if the board wants to be there, member of the board, planning, I think you suggested building stormwater, because this really is a stormwater issue, and see if we can figure out a way around this. I have a few ideas. So I would like to take out the strike through on septic inspections, but note that it's short-term, and we'll come up with a better solution that won't be so taxing for the time of our Health Department. Is that all right with all of you?
So do you have a motion for that?
Yep. So I'm going to make a motion that we leave in place for now, septic inspections upon further review, and those would remain at $100.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Sorry. The other thing that I would like to do is I appreciate that we need to inspect for seasonal establishments, meaning farmer's markets, which could be winter or summer. I'm not sure why, I guess we use nine months. I'm not sure why we do that. And I wonder if you could provide an answer. I know it's changed from four to nine, but why isn't this just an annual inspection fee?
The four-month market, a lot of people really weren't utilizing that option, and they were mainly doing the nine-month option. But we do inspect them each location that's operating after markets.
Okay. But there's a winter market that goes, right? I mean, so if we just did a year, I think it might be clearer, right? Is that a hardship?
You don't do a year. It's not a permanent establishment.
It's at a different location, so each location's inspected, at a different address for the winter market, except the switchyard.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm going to make another recommendation and ask my colleagues what you think about this, because I feel like getting fresh food from our community growers and producers and small artisan manufacturers to our local community is so important that I think this is something that we should subsidize a bit. And so I'm going to make two motions, well, I'm going to make two parts to one motion.
Should we take care of the other amendment first?
No, we can just have one vote on all the amendments if you want.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is a motion that would amend under seasonal establishments to an annual term instead of nine months. And then I would move that we change the amount to $100 for up to three markets and $200 for four to six markets.
Is there any response? Ms. Kelly?
Yes. So just to clarify, $100 for up to three markets and $200 for up to six, was that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And the understanding, and clearly, yes, this is not, this is going to require a little bit of subsidy from county taxpayers, but I think it's well worth it. And I think a lot of our growers and producers are living on the margin, and I don't think it's, I think having a different inspection fee would make more sense for them, especially if they're appearing at multiple markets. I don't, there aren't six markets now, but you never know.
And so this would, so if they sell in the summer during one of the local markets, and then in the winter market also, that would require a second inspection. So that would be a second market, or second location.
But it wouldn't matter.
Right. Right.
Can I ask the Health Department a question? Because I want to make sure it's clear in my mind. When we're talking about an establishment operating nine months or fewer, as in this ordinance, versus, and I think the amendment was, for it to be one year, does that, I guess, how does that, would that interact with, you know, a seasonal establishment versus a full-time establishment? Because a full-time establishment would be operating for a full calendar year. I guess, I'm trying to figure out why the distinction is there between nine months versus a year, and it seems to me that if we change it to a year, we may be creating issues with people establishing a permit that would be, that would be your normal year-round, in-and-out, everyday, open business versus something that is truly a seasonal and is not kind of a brick-and-mortar, I'm here all year kind of a question. I am wondering how that would interplay with things like food trucks and things like that, which...
Could I make a comment? It's not actually equivalent to a brick-and-mortar establishment, because it takes places in different locations throughout the year.
I think the intent is that the license is good for a year, but it is that these are not markets that, that particular market operates the entire year. It's that the markets themselves are seasonal. Is that...
If I may, I think the question is, is there something other than a market that falls under, that falls under this definition? And so I think that's the question in concern.
Right. Like a brick-and-mortar throughout the year, that period.
There's, so there's a temporary food service, which is per event, and then there's mobile food service, which would be the food trucks, right? So do we need to call this a, do we need to call this a seasonal market? I guess the other thing I'm thinking about is that we do have an allowance for roadside produce stands in our county. And I don't, we don't really have any kind of licensing requirement, but I would assume that if somebody wanted to sell prepared foods rather than just produce, they would have to have that, and that would be a year, potentially. So that's, I think that's where my thinking was. But I saw both the one per event on the next page, right? And so I thought about, you know, fairs and art festivals or whatever. And then I saw mobile food service, so I thought, okay, that's food trucks. And so I thought, maybe it's the name, maybe it's the title that's the issue. I appreciate you raising this, Jeff.
But it clearly says that these are seasonal establishments.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. But if you give somebody a year, then they could do a fall market and then maybe a winter market. It doesn't mean that they're open the whole time. And so I don't know if there's some other way to delineate that this is not a brick-and-mortar.
Could it be described as a license to participate in seasonal markets?
I like that.
And I guess I don't have the Health Code memorized, so I'm wondering if there's not a definition in the Health Code that would solve this problem.
We are looking at revising our definitions once we get into 2024. That is something that we do need to update that hasn't been done. So that is something that we are looking at adding into.
Okay. So I will, I'm going to take Lee's suggestion as a motion, and I'm going to second that motion to change that terminology from seasonal establishment to license to participate in seasonal markets. And I will second it.
And it was a motion.
It sounded like one.
So this is all, all of these amendments all at once, I just wanted to see what everyone thought.
So we have the amendment to maintain septic inspections, still, right now, still at $100. We have an amendment to change the licensing charge for seasonal markets, so that it would be $100 to cover from one to three different markets, and $200 to cover between four and six markets. And this will be referred to as a license to participate in seasonal markets. Does that cover everything?
An annual, and it would be annual.
An annual, an annual license. Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public discussion on this item?
Thank you for everybody's patience.
I was amazed when I read through all this, how many different kinds of inspections and licensing that our Health Department does.
Yeah.
And so it's...
And I think the county residents appreciate it, you know, to be able to go to a food establishment and know that they're going to be safe. So we appreciate their hard work.
When I was, also when I was reviewing this, I'm thinking, food inspection results used to be published in our local paper, and there were certain establishments I've just stopped going to because of it, I think. And I miss that sort of thing, but it...
She's got it on her website now.
It is on the website now, for people that want to review that. So, yes. So seeing no comment, I will call for a vote on the, of course. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. I just did want to comment that while many people probably know that I am a farmer's market vendor, I do not sell any of the products that are affected by this change in licensing. This has nothing to do with me.
Yeah. So you wouldn't need to recuse yourself, because this is not a financial issue. Yep. Very good point. Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Okay, a call for a vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Amendment passes three to zero. Is there any other discussion on the other items within this revision to Chapter 310 Any public comment? Seeing none, a call for a vote on approval of the Health Services Fees Chapter 310 revision as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you so much.
Next item.
I move approval of Commercial Services of Bloomington, Inc., On-Call Service Agreement. Fund names: County General, Non-Reverting Capital, Non-Reverting Operating. Fund numbers: 1,000, 1178, and 1179, not to exceed $10,000.
And we...
Second.
Looking for Ms. Whitmer here already. Ms. Whitmer, please tell us about this.
This is an on-call for HVAC and plumbing. We have mini water heaters and furnaces and whatnot at Cars Farm Park and in the other parks. And in case we have a breakdown, we would like to have someone on-call and ready to go.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Makes sense.
No questions. I would like to point out that this does not cover your offices in the showers building.
It does not. Mainly, it'll probably just be Cars Farm Park.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, a call for a vote on approval of the Commercial Services of Bloomington, Inc., On-Call Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I move approval of Go Express Travel Service Agreement. Fund names: County General, Non-Reverting Operating. Fund numbers: 1,000 and 1179, not to exceed $6,000.
Second. And again, Ms. Whitmer.
This is Go Express. We contract with them to take our day camp places and also adult trips. We do not have access to rural transit anymore, so this is very critical to our operation. And we have used them last year, and they were very good.
Thank you for that. Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Ms. Thomas?
None.
I hear about these when I attend some of your meetings, so I'm glad to hear that it worked out well last year.
It did work out well.
Any public comment on that item? If not, call for a vote on the Go Express Travel Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item, please.
I'm going to move that we continue Item D until our next meeting, which is April 5.
Second. Is there any discussions? Okay. Any public comment? All those in favor of continuing Item D until our meeting on April 5, 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Next item.
I move approval of Bloodsoot, Rigor, Cooper, and James Engineering Service Agreement. Fund name: American Rescue Plan Act. Fund number: 8950 and the amount of $39,900.
Second. Ms. Ridge?
Good morning. This agreement is for land surveying and civil engineering services for the Marlin Hills Drainage Infrastructure Improvement Project. The purpose of the project is to improve the aging drainage infrastructure at Scenic Drive, Hillview Drive, and Woodbridge Drive. We wanted to do this in preparation of paving the roads in Marlin Hills as part of a... We wanted to do this in preparation of paving the roads in Marlin Hills as part of an overall paving project, drainage improvement project in that subdivision.
Questions or comments?
Just that any improvement in drainage is a very good thing.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yeah, thank you.
And there was an article on the front page of today's local paper about increased problems due to flooding and things like that, so I'm glad that we're stepping up and taking care of this in advance of potential problems.
Yeah, this is, this is part of the six subdivision culvert and paving projects that we're doing as part of ARPA, and appreciate working with the council on this.
Yes. And this is all just for figuring out what has to be happening with everything. This is not the actual, yeah.
It's not the actual work to be done. It's what needs to be done.
Yes, yes. And I was reading through all this, it's like foot by foot almost, what needs to happen. It's amazing.
Yep.
Yeah. Is there any public comment on this item? Any other comments from my colleagues?
Yep.
Not. Call for a vote on the Bledsoe, Rigger, Cooper, and James Engineering Service Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three to zero. We have no appointments today, but I've got another long list of announcements. For people who live inside the city of Bloomington, in 2019, just a little over 10% of individuals voted in the primary election. And since we have all Democrats elected within the city of Bloomington, that means about 1 in 10 eligible voters determine who would be the mayor, the clerk, and on the city council. So I urge people to exercise their right to vote. Voter registration for this spring ends April 3rd, 2023. That's for residents of Elletsville and Bloomington. You may register online at indiana.gov-sos-elections, or call the clerk's office at 812-349-2612 for more information. If you want to vote absentee by mail, you have to have your application for that in to the clerk by April the 20th, and the deadline for your actual absentee ballot to be received by the clerk is May the 1st. Early in-person voting begins April the 4th at Election Central at 302 South Walnut, and Primary Election Day is Tuesday, May the 23rd, and polls will be open that day from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I want to congratulate the Planning Department on what they were able to do with the CDO this last week. It seemed to go very well, at least the session that I attended. There's still free COVID testing available through Monroe County Health Department at 119 West 7th Street, as well as the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. We are still accepting applications for boards and commissions, and remind everyone that we continue to have virtual office hours via Zoom each month for anyone who wants to speak with one of us. So if you're interested, please go to co.monroe.in.us, and it's listed on the calendars. We continue to have blood drives. These are at IV Tech. Next one is Thursday, April 6th, that's next week, from 10:00 to 3:00, and on Friday, April 7th, from 1:00 to 6:00. There are also drives on Thursday, May the 11th, from 10:00 to 3:00, Friday, May the 12th, from 1:00 to 6:00. And you can sign up for the Monroe County Alert Notification Systems, which will tell you if we're going to have some of these flooding issues that we were talking about with the design work, as well as health-related emergencies. And again, you can sign up at our website at co.monroe.in.us. And Monroe County Commissioners and the Monroe County Council have extended the Assistance Fund for county residents who need assistance in paying for rent utilities. You can contact your local township trustee for assistance. Every resident of Monroe County lives in a township, and you have a township trustee, so don't wait until it gets too late to seek that help. The names of all the township trustees are listed also in our minutes each week. Do you have any questions or comments, announcements?
No, I don't.
And I don't think we have anything in our work session, do we? Ms. Purdy or Mr. Cockrell? Great, okay, then this meeting is adjourned. We will see everyone back here next Wednesday.
And what are we doing next Wednesday during our meeting?
Ah, what fun we're going to have. We have invited the Big Ten women's champions, basketball champions, to come and be with us next Wednesday. And so we want to invite the public to join us and celebrate these amazing, amazing women.
Amazing women, amazing women.
Yeah.
Awesome.
And several of them have said that they will be returning next year.
Yeah.
It's been an exciting year to watch.
Fun.
To watch these amazing, amazing women.
Yeah, thank you.
So 10:00 a.m. next week, we will be here where you're in. Or you're Cream and Crimson, sorry. Yeah, okay, thank you, everyone.